Okay, we have two meetings tonight. We're gonna start out with our August meeting that we missed. Jack?
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Judy Espona. Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Pippinger.
Here.
James Witty.
Here.
Here.
First on our agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion to approve one of the approved minutes. Second.
Mr. Mayor of Pippinger, second by Davis, any discussion? Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes.
Yes.
Next is approval of reports of office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mayor of Pippinger, second by Davis, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal. Judy Espona. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Matthew Trancom. Yes. James Witty.
Yes.
Next we have approval of notaries. We've got Jennifer Caroline Donovan Port at Converstion Federal Credit Union, Amy Christina Electford at Laura Crawford's Attorney at Law, and Matthias Flair of National Title Fund of Federal Law, Linda K. Adams of the Polk County Board of Education, and Sharon Cheek of Construction Services LLC.
I'd like a motion to approve this.
Question made by Woody, second by Dale, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes.
Next we have budget amendments. It looks like we have two. They're both out of general 101. The first one comes out of line 101-39-000. I'm designated $650 over into 531-00-355, 650. And next we got 101-46120, airport maintenance program of $41,046.46. Next is 101-46120, airport maintenance of $1,305.75 over into 58220-702 of airport improvements of $42,352.21.
Madam Chair, you're entertaining motions. Are you entertaining motions from the...
Yeah, that's all we got.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Question made by Pippinger, second by Davis, any discussion?
Yeah, on this travel. Yeah, we had another office holder that was getting traveled to go to Copper Hill. That's all Polk County. And is this for a clerk or is this on budget amendment number three? Or is this on the office holder?
It's a clerk, not the office holder.
And it takes $650 twice a month to go up there?
That's for the whole year.
Uh?
That's for the whole year. This is a one-time move to get them through the whole year.
That's one?
One time, one year.
If it's every month, what does the budget mean?
Oh, the whole year, okay.
That's not for one month, that's for the entire missing year.
That comes up to around 50 a month.
It's about $25 a year.
Borrow the basket, guys.
Any more discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is COVID money from Dale.
Just move that to the October.
Next is our bid approval for the Polk County Road Department. We have guardrails. Bids are open in June 3rd. Looks like it was awarded to Cumberland Guard Rail in Pikeville. Petroleum for June 3rd. It looks like it come... We didn't put who was awarded to this one, but it's Wheatwater Valley Oil in Chattanooga and Hollywood, Cleveland. It doesn't look like they've chose because it says they requested the bus cross and hasn't been chosen yet. Road stripping went to Volunteer Highway Supply. That's for three of those. And then what, the one for the petroleum doesn't have one?
Well, that's our one about petroleum. What's the story on that?
Not sure. It says, if they didn't put who it was awarded to. At the bottom he says per, I was gonna say, those parties are something called.
County Executive, you signed this, what the...
That bid was not...
Finally did.
I'm not for sure because those bids are through the Road Department. They don't come through my office, so there was no opening within my office. That bid opening was done at the Road Department itself.
County Executive, if they opened it and sent it to us as an award, or if they awarded the bid?
My understanding is, is the Road Department does not have to follow...
The standard protocol.
The standard protocol, like all the other RFP openings. So, to be honest with you, Commissioner Pippinger, I'm not for sure. Whenever it was brought to my attention, I asked, and I think they even contacted you on this matter. As long as that bid opening was not done in the County Executive's office with the Commissioner President. And it's because they fall under a different budgeted, budgeted items. They have their own...
You don't know if these have been awarded or just...
It says bids awarded to.
So, it's just for information?
Apparently drawn by the auditor, I guess it was. It said per auditor, at the bottom, so I think, I guess there's things like that.
And like I said, I did, I questioned, called up the Road Department and asked how did they... All we've done is because it's underneath their, underneath their budget, how that they rolled, rolled their budget with. And so, it was needed signed off on so he could go ahead and move that, move it around and get it done.
I'd like a motion to approve both bids for the Road Department.
Just wait a minute. What?
Oh, three of them. Or three of them, man, I think.
Second motion.
Question made by Brooks, second by Woody, any discussion?
Yes. Did you make the motion to approve the bids?
The bids have already been awarded.
That's what I'm saying.
Or accept the bids, everything works.
If they accept them, then we don't.
Well, we're doing it by...
I don't know, that's what I'm, that's why I was asking.
Well, I figured, figured for our approval.
I figure it's just for our information because somebody would be here from the Road Department if they were presenting bids for us to approve.
That's what I felt like too, that it's already been awarded, so why do we...
If they've awarded it, then I would...
Well, I was saying, my motion, I did. I figured since it's on the agenda, we had to approve it.
I'm assuming these are just information purposes. Does anybody here from the Road Department? It might only be for information purposes.
Next is our concrete bids for the show barn.
Those were the RFPs that we did 10,000, they were opened in the office. Commissioner President was present. I know a lot of the commissioners have had concerns as far as the two bids that were turned in. The commission does not like the bids that were turned in and wish to have this rerun again. Do whatever the commission sets forth, but those were the only two bids that were turned in. One of the concerns was, is one of those that bid, we're talking, was talking about taking some of the can off of the barn to get a truck in. He did not put pumping into his bid. Another concern that I heard from the commission was the amount of the other bid that was turned in, so. Whatever the bodies did.
The name of the three bids. The first one, the cheapest bid, he was planning on, we didn't tell him he couldn't, really in his thoughts. But he was planning on taking the front off the show barn, which would always warrant it. And the second one, I don't know if he misunderstood the bid or not, I think he quoted Horner Hall's bid. I mean, I've never heard a price that high.
He all, I don't have...
I'm making a motion to approve.
He all had the allowance, so I mean, I'd like for everybody to know what was turned in.
You have to tell what that man put in. I've never seen two bids that big variation between two on the same job.
So, the one bid is for 8,200 square feet of flooring, two aprons on the outside of each end of the building for 110 yards of concrete. Price for concrete was, if this bidder received it, was $14,969 for 4,000 PSI with fiber. 4,000 PSI without fiber was $14,728.45. And I'll get this to the newspapers, I know you all like to, so you don't have to try to keep up with them. And then for the labor grade four, four finish of the concrete, provide 80 tons of gravel for grading is $9,900. The other bid that was submitted was, um... He always does these on these, $14,190. Pump truck was $1320. Wire option was $1830. Plus 27, 28 for profit, $1496 overhead, $1496 unseen. For an estimated total of $50,070 and 77 cents.
That was somebody, come on, I don't... Everybody's been paid, it's an urgent budget. This one guy could have done it. He took man off, left pump truck, just cut the thousand. How do we get one bid on the same job that's $50,000, one is $15,000? That's $35,000 difference on the same job.
Like I said, it's, this, this one bid is 9,900 for the labor, $14,969. That's 4,000 PSI with fiber. So, 20, you can say 25,000. And then your other bid is $50,070 and 77 cents.
Man, I hate it forward. About $1,000. I'm glad we read this.
All the bids on the concrete, you have to re-bid. With bids coming in from County Executive's office one week or a month ago.
For what purpose?
For the cost and for uncontourier warranty issues with the metal building.
Did you say November or December 12th?
November. They come in in November, November, maybe. Without giving enough time to run. Solid shortly to October, we missed it.
To the month of October. And there was no, this time there was no, hold on. There was a concrete company that did turn a bid in, but they sent their bid via email, which is illegal. We, it has to be a sealed bid. And so, I, we did not open that bid. Because I know before the commission's awarded a, a concrete company to buy our concrete from and then somebody poured and finished. But there was no other concrete bid, in other words, the company itself, no concrete company, put in a bid. And I did contact some of those to give them a heads up, just so they knew that this bid was out there.
And also, this money here now is some more grant money that we got. I think we always need to make that clear because a lot of people get confused and think that this is going to come out of our budget that we got.
This, this is part of the $25,000 RDGB, Rural Development Grant that the county did give, so.
Robbie, will November date push you to the term of the grant?
No, sir. The grant's not up until June, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's correct, Patrice, do you remember? I think it is June. And as well, I have been talking to the electricians as far as trying to do some electrical. So, if you don't care as well, John, to let me have the approval in that motion, to also submit some electrical. That way, if this concrete does stay astronomically high, we can at least use the money that we have in the grant and have something going trying to get the show barn wrapped up.
County Executive, if you don't care, let's, let's keep those two motions second.
Be fine.
Got two issues.
Thank you.
I understand to reject. Both bids on concrete, how about getting those listed for review?
Motion made by Pippinger, second by Davis, any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes.
Madam Chair, before we move off that subject, going with the show barn bids, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the County Executive to take out any and all bids and contacts doing electrical that would fit with the grant for wiring and expenditures.
Second. Does that work for your right?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
Would you want to tell us what that was?
Wiring for the show barn?
Bids for wiring.
Just covering wiring and the concrete, nobody gets close to being completed.
Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is surplus list. It was in our packet from the east and west side. Obviously...
I don't, I didn't get it.
It says all surplus, except the floor buffer.
Yes, that, that was, that was from our east and west Polk libraries. Whenever I took office, Jake told me that somewhere in the county, there's a floor buffer. And so, I think we may have finally found the floor buffer, it may be yet. But that's the only thing on there that I've asked. All the rest of this is things that they don't use no more and they've lived out their life expectancy with the libraries and there won't be surplus.
Actually, is that, that was in the paper, the surplus list?
Yes, sir.
If everything on it wanted surplus?
Everything, except for that floor buffer.
What's, what's your plan procedure?
They're wanting to donate it to either people helping people or if there was anything in there that could be of value to the schools. That's my understanding of the library.
And then everything else is just dismissed?
Just dismiss, and if there's anything that's trash, it will be trash.
Make a motion, we declared surplus and except for the buffer.
I'll say it again.
Question made by Woody, second by Pippinger, any discussion?
What does give to friends of library?
Pardon?
What does it mean, dispose this to give to friends of library?
There'll be some of those items that, and I assume that if the friends of library have any need for some of those to keep for backup or spare, but it's my understanding that most of all this is, is lived out its expectancy within the libraries.
We would listen to libraries, if they would see, let us sign off on it.
And what they don't give, like I said, in the verbal conversation with the library director, whatever didn't go there, they would, you know, reach out to people helping people and/or possibly if there's anything that the school is not willing. But outside of that, then it would be taken to the dump.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
I just, I just don't understand, give to FOL?
Yep.
Well, they're, they're a, they chart, they're a chartered nonprofit organization listed. They are listed, as far as I know, with the state as an organization. We have prepared to give to nonprofit charter organizations and pretty much if there's something there they want to have, then we'll sign off on it.
They're giving it to the organization, not to the individuals.
No, it's not the friends of libraries organization.
I'm a friend of the library.
Are you a...
I'm not a member such.
Are you a member of friends of the library?
No.
But I am a friend of the library.
Then you can have.
Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes.
Next we have our 911 resolution. Title, a resolution to update terms and reappointment members of the Board of Directors of the 911 Emergency Communication District. Whereas due to vacancies and change of the Board of Directors of the 911 Emergency Communication District, the terms of members require updating and reappointments are needed. And whereas current members of the Board have agreed to continue serving and where is and according to TCA Section 7-86-105, the County Mayor has appointed the below named persons to serve the terms specified, subject to the County Commission approval. Now therefore being entered. Resolved by the County Commission that we do hereby appoint the following persons to the initial terms specified with all subsequent terms to be four years. Members, initial terms and expirations. Matt Green, two years, March 1st, 2023. Ryan Falls, two years, March 1st, 2023. Nancy Waters, three years, March 1st, 2024. Wayne Lattimer, three years, March 1st, 2024. Mark Worley, three years, March 1st, 2024. Bruce Wentworth, four years, March 1st, 2025. And Steve Loftie, four years, March 1st, 2025. Being further resolved that the resolution take effect from after its passage to the public where welfare required approval this day, 16th of September, 2021.
Motion to approve of this is... What revision does that be?
It'll be the 81?
81. 8, yes, 81, 2021.
Second.
Question made by Pippinger, second by Davis, any discussion?
This sets up on the 911 appointments through the current, current schedule.
Yes, sir. That was one of the things, because everybody said they didn't know how long terms were on that board. And since we had those two appointments, it just came up, the 911 boards just sent them back to the commission so you all have that approval that those terms set.
Or I'd like to create a stagger.
Correct, they are staggered.
Any discussion? Roll call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
Judy Espona.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes.
Next we have Schuylers Creek Dump Updates.
That was done last month and I think we didn't get to have her meeting, but myself and William Wallace were in attendance at the federal building and we seen the two individuals that were brought to justice. For one, that was the holler of the trash out of Georgia. As they littered it all down what's known on the east side of the county as Polk County Hill, going out to 68. And then whenever that person decided to take it to Schuylers Creek and throw it out. So, they were both received a $500 fine, which in turn went towards the federal side. The county didn't get nothing in return for that. But the judge awarded them the due community service hours underneath the direction, the authority of myself and Will Wallace, our litter grant coordinator. And so, the lady received an 80-hour sentence of community service to be done. This can consist of litter pickup, working at our dumps and things of that nature to help to curb this. So, if you happen to see an attendant that you're not familiar with at the dump, they're probably a litter bug. Also, the other defendant was a younger man. He was sentenced to 200 hours of community service. So, he has been working on both sides of the county. He works at the Benton Dump sometimes. He's going to be working at the Relance Dump Site. He'll be working in Lindsted, hopefully. He'll be working at South Polk. So, if you happen to see somebody new working at one of the dump sites, that's one of our litter bugs that was busted for trash in Polk County, so. And I do appreciate everybody who had a part in that. I know whenever we first found this, the halls up on the east side of the county and little fields, as we call them, as we helped to make this take, take place like it did, as well as Ken Seymour with Forest Service and getting some justice for those that have decided to trash our county in which we live in.
I'll be close, I'm gonna tell you, good job on getting it all the way through, Robbie.
Thank you. And like I said, I, I want this to be known right quick. I know $500 is not a lot of money. It wouldn't matter if it's $10,000. The county didn't get none of that. But what we did get, we got 280 hours of community service, you know, that's going to be done. And I'll go ahead and state it right now. The, the one lady, she had to get a ride to go back and clean up Schuylers Creek. So, I've offered her just to work on the east side of the county because of the travel. That's a little much. The younger man, judge pretty hard on him. But I've offered him, if he makes that travel from the east side of the west side, you know, people may not like it, but I offered it to him at one and a half of his time. But that way, he's kind of spread out throughout the whole county and he can see that what he's done has affected Polk County. So, it was a good day that day. That was a trip very well worth it to Chattanooga, I can say.
What was the age on the two individuals?
Age? I think the lady was, if they're 50, I think 56, 54, 56. And the, the young man, 1920. And the judge told him, now he appreciated him standing up, taking this, but that he was going to show him that just because he came forward and, but there was still a consequence for what he done, so. And I know people on the east side want to see Schuylers Creek cleaned back up, want them to do that. That's Forest Service land, so the county, we don't, we, we can't make them go and do that. The young man's mother said that she would more than likely make him go do it as a lesson learned. And which I told her if he did go, that I would have Will Wallace to at least come up and bring him a bottle of water and make sure that it was took care of. They have to turn in how many bags of trash whenever they do road pickup. And at what convenience center that they turn that in, the attendants at the convenience center will keep up with how many bags of trash that they've logged in as well. So, we're sure to get our full 280 hours of community service worked out.
Madam Chair, person, could I ask a question? The folks that did this, that's a lot of litter. Was that commercial or did, you know, that, that's a lot of garbage from that.
So, oh yeah, so what happened was is the, the gentleman was a Polk County resident and he traveled over into Georgia, which is right down, I don't know the exact name, Daniel, but I've always called it Dill Holler. It's that road that goes, goes through. So, he'd actually traveled over there to see this lady. This lady had some trash and he offered to clean it up. And more than likely, she paid him to clean it up. Then he decided that he was going to go and he drove by Grassy Creek and he knew he'd get called to Grassy Creek because he was from the other, up end of the other side of the county. And so, Eddie would, Eddie, Eddie would have knew he wasn't, so he continued to drive out, drove all the way out to 68. Then when he showed up at that dump site, she looked, just simply put her jacket on to go out and see what he was doing. He got scared. And so, he left from the Farner Dump Site, turned left, went to Schuylers Creek, just across the river, decided to unload his trash, then drove back to Georgia and got another load and took it there as well. We filled my cattle trailer half full. Myself, Will Wallace and Steve Loftie, I took my cattle trailer because I knew this stuff would blow out. And so, we went up there and loaded the trailer half full and received pounds and pounds. That was the only time, Jack, I was ever glad to find a lot of political material because it took us right to their door.
You did a good job.
So, it was, it was, it was a big involvement. I know the, I know the Sheriff's Department on the east side was big in helping us with that as well as the Forest Service. But that, that's how it can be done, we do.
Next we have our suicide confirmation.
This is, every year whenever we do this, I know everybody in this room has had somebody in your life that's done this. Suicide's an awful thing. And so, without Madam Chair, I'll read the city council... And so without Madam Chair, I'll read the city council proclamation from county executive as a prevention of awareness this month of September twenty twenty-one. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than eleven hundred lives lost in Tennessee each year, and an estimated twenty-five attempted suicides per each suicide death. Whereas suicide is the ninth leading cause of death in Tennessee. The second leading cause of death amongst young ages of ten to fourteen-year-olds, as well as young age adults between the age of twenty-five and thirty-four. And the third leading, leading cause of children ages fifteen to twenty-four. And whereas more than three lives a day are lost to suicide in Tennessee, which means we lose twenty-one Tennesseans each week and ninety-seven per month. And whereas Tennessee veterans, active-duty military, National Guardmen face the risk compared with the general population with more dying from suicide in combat. And whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is key to preventing further suffering and loss of life. And the risk of human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who die by suicide or those who have attempted a suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by the governor, and the Tennessee legislature has declared team suicide prevention as a state priority in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network to implement the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas Tennessee is a national leader in the effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan. And whereas the governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots coalition of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas we encourage all Tennesseans to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, their friends, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture that they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, a handshake, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, I, Robbie Hatcher, as the, as the mayor or county executive of Polk County, do proclaim September twenty twenty-one as suicide prevention awareness month. And that would be placed in the, in the role within minutes to be held in this meeting. Thank you.
Next.
Motion on that.
No, sir, just a proclamation. Unless you all want to make a motion to accept it, that it's just a proclamation that suicide awareness is a month of September.
I'd like a motion to accept the proclamation that was presented by the county executive. It always support such proclamation.
Motion to have a pimpin' nurse, second by Dewey. Any discussion? Pro call. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
Yes.
Next, we have our library general report.
Was that in the packet?
Yes.
Is anybody here from the library? That was the one where he said that somebody from the library would be here to give the general report. It's usually whenever somebody from the library just comes and gives the commission just to report what's going on within the library. I think last year it was a veteran fire officer, Woody, that read that to you, but that must have not. That was just for information. This was, this was what, that month before, whenever Greg had asked me to give it to the, the fire department as far as the
Oh, this was a
That's what needs to be in that Oakwood Fire Hall before it could be occupied by the trucks. That's just for information.
It's for information. I'm not sure it all is required, but the building needs to, meaning like over the electric commission and a G-Cap, a smother, does it need to have this too? That's a lot.
Yes, when everybody get there, we'll get that. See when everybody come. It seems like we basically just took that.
That is all of our office meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So let's start our September meeting. Was there a pro call for it? Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Here. I'm sorry.
Confused.
For the pro call for our September meeting.
I meant, yes, I'm here.
Yes, I'm here. Here I am.
Daniel Deal. D V S. Thomas.
Here.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Piffenger.
Here.
Samantha Tronka.
Here.
And James Wade.
Here.
We won't have our minutes for our previous meeting since we already done, since we just done, so just have to put that one in our First, we have our appointment of chairman.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate D V S. Thomas.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Greg Brooks.
First, we will vote on Dewey. Can you follow the rest? Greg Brooks.
Hi.
Jamie Davis.
Hi.
Daniel Deal.
Hi.
D V S. Thomas.
No.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Hi.
John Piffenger.
Hi, yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
Yes.
Next, we'll vote on Greg Brooks. Pro call on you. Greg Brooks.
Hi.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Hi, yes. Oh, wait, yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
No.
I'll give us one, no. Two, yes.
I guess I'll take over from here. I might get some papers. I actually had two of them. I was probably one of August meetings. I've got my September papers. Next, on the end is a former vice chairperson.
I nominate John Hoyt Piffenger.
I nominate Mr. Woody.
Any more nominations? Pro call on John Hoyt.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
No.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Hi, yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
No.
I'll give us two, nine, one, pass.
Next, is approved reports of officers.
Motion approved.
Second.
Your motion, John, second for Daniel, any discussion? Pro call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
Yes. Next is approval of noders. We got Lois Leffler. From Benton, Tennessee. Melinda Duncan. From Cleveland, Tennessee. Leanne Bay from Old Ford, Tennessee.
No, Melinda's not from Cleveland.
She works for Cleveland.
Yeah.
From Polk County.
Right.
She's down on the front. And then Leanne Bay, Old Ford. Is that number three we got?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve these three.
Second.
Got a motion of Jane, second for Jeremy, any discussion on the noders? Pro call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
Yes. Next is budget amendments. We've got Sheriff's Office. One of them. Kansas City's office. First one is a number five. Kansas City's office. Whole sorts of funds. Mine, one oh one, forty-nine, seven hundred, in amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and two seventy-seven. One oh one, forty-four, five-seven, for three hundred for contribution. One oh one, forty-eight, nine-ninety, direct appropriation grant for a hundred thousand. One oh one, forty-six, nine-eighty, from Mother State Grant for sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. For a total of a hundred ninety-eight thousand, forty dollars, seventy-seven cents. I get, is this the same budget amendment? Just two different lines?
The line you just read is where it's coming from.
Okay, and then it's going then it's going in, the first one's going into the five forty-four, ten, seven ninety, civil defense and other equipment. Second line's going into fifty-six, nine hundred, five ninety-nine, parks and rec. Third one, going into ninety-nine, one hundred, five ninety, transferred out of the road department. Fifty-four, one-ten, four ninety-nine, and we going into it for Sheriff's Department and other supply. And it'd be a total change of a hundred ninety-eight thousand, forty dollars, seventy-seven cents.
Chris, where's this, where's it, where's this one originating from? Is this, this isn't one of the ones that come out today, was it?
No, this has been in the packet.
This is one in the packet.
Number sixteen is the one that come out today.
Right.
Uh, number sixteen is from Sheriff's Office.
Welcome in, I'm calling.
Okay, that's you. Coming out of one oh one, fifty-four, one-ten, four ninety-nine, for a thousand eighty-nine, ninety-eight. And one oh one, fifty-four, two thirty, four ninety-nine, in amount of eight sixteen. Total of one thousand nine hundred and six eighty-eight. That's going into one oh one, fifty-four, one-ten, three fifty-five for travel. One oh one, fifty-four, two thirty, three fifty-five also for travel, for eight sixteen. And total being moved one thousand nine hundred and six eighty-eight. And number one is coming out of line one twenty-two, thirty-nine hundred, undersigned fund balance for six thousand. Proposed expenditure is for travel, going in one twenty-two, fifty-four, one fifty, three fifty-five, in amount of three thousand. And one twenty-two, fifty-four, one fifty-four, one for canine supplies, in amount of three thousand, for total of six thousand dollars.
That's, that's supposed to be
That was one twenty-two. One one twenty-two.
Yeah, that's probably one twenty-two, that's true.
And it is money done in. Are you budget just being moved around?
Yeah, budget is definitely set in the pro call. I make a motion to approve budget number one. Be the dress time.
Second.
Got a motion with John, second for Dana, any discussion? Pro call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
Yes. Next is analyst contract commission paper.
We still have one, Ron.
I didn't have none. Why did I never have any?
The first two that you called out, he only occurred in the motion for one twenty-two.
One twenty-three. I like the motion to
As only, I thought one of them was two. I'm eager about five minutes, I get twenty-two.
I like the motion to approve all under one oh one.
All second.
Motion with John, second by Samantha, any more discussion? Pro call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
Yes. Is this one from Scoville's?
Yes.
It'll be, what number it be?
What number?
Everybody got a copy of it?
What is it, bro?
The Scoville. It's a, just strictly grant money, close through money, close this. I'm not going to bore everybody with them numbers. Anybody wants a copy of it? Pay for anybody in the house.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of Jane, second for Jeremy, any discussion? Pro call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Jamie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D V S. Thomas. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Piffenger.
Yes.
Samantha Tronka.
Yes.
And James Wade.
Yes. Next is analyst contract commission paper.
I, yeah. I think we have a, it worked out to have a very good analyst service after everything was settled and all the two full-time, one part-time analysts has come into play the way we've done the contract. We're actually running three analysts on all the time. Where's Chris?
Right.
And I, and my brick, we're running three analysts.
Yes.
Even though we're contracted for two full and a part with a part in rotations, the way y'all have managed it, we have three on all the time. Even though we need to start going above and below, then you have two and one. I'm going to be honest, I started bringing this up two or three times since we've done the contract. And here lately, recently, I see more of a need, and let me explain exactly what that need is. It's not that our three analysts are not capable of the coverage of the county. That's not my argument. It's in combination with what's going on for the last year with, with the COVID. That makes it to where although our analysts are there and they're running their calls. The problem is, once they get to the hospital, that analyst is assigned to that patient unless one or two things happens. The hospital takes possession of the patient. Or the patient fires the analyst service and sends them back to the county. Which is something that Chris discussed has would create a havoc at the hospital and would begin calls. So when you've got three analysts sitting at the hospital with patients in need, and you have another call at this point in time, what's the chances of getting coverage for another county or municipality, Chris, right now?
Pretty slim.
So you have a call. So if you have a call, you have a call. And a hospital that it may take up to three hours to, to actually be their patient. So you've got the ambulance covered with a, with a, uh, a, a citizen at the hospital. They can't leave to go take that call. And you've got Bradley, McMahon, and everybody else that's absolutely covered up. So I'm not saying the three ambulances can't take care of the problem. I'm saying we have more patients in flow at this time with the hospitals being backed up. That I, I think ambulance committee really needs to be looking at, and before that. And yes, it is one. But if you've got somebody sitting at home for three hours that feels like they're about to die. And you've got somebody at the hospital sitting there for three hours waiting on the hospital to allow them to be a patient. And you've got the ambulance there in between that can't help anybody, then you need that whole ambulance. Uh, that'd be turned over to the ambulance committee. Uh, it is too late to go back with the original bids that were given. You, because of the timeframe and the acceptance. I don't think you have a, a legal standing. But to put out for that fourth, even though you would have the, the variable of having a current contract that would come into play with your decision. And I'm telling you this firsthand. I started to fire the ambulance service down there at Bradley. For no other reason than to allow them to come back to Pope because I knew there was a, a call that'd been holding for about two hours the other night. I also knew that Bradley County would have a bid when they left me down there at Tenova. Uh, and sent their butts back for them to do more work. The only answer there, and then, Chris, am I wrong? I could AMAT y'all, ambulance service sent them back here.
Yeah, that's kind of a very, once we, actually, Chris, too. What, what's your, on that hospital property, think of the, you, your, their responsibility?
And you know they're gonna see it that way when y'all pulled out and left me on the county, Pope County.
Yeah.
Yeah. So ultimately, if y'all got three ambulances at the hospital and you've got a call here, what have you got? Problem? Okay. I think we just, I think the people in the county deserve, and I know I took it, I looked at the money when we worked at three. Two full and, and a part. Which is what we went with. I looked at the money hard. But the backup situation that's here now was not here then.
So can we negotiate with them on the floor?
Not, we can take into consideration, we have an active contract with them. A working situation on a, a, a bid for the fourth. This will go in, this will go into the ambulance committee and the county attorney. And y'all's attorney. Ultimately, you're looking at the minimum that we started. If y'all approved this on ambulance committee and them to take action, you're in the middle of three months. Which sounds like a long time. I don't think the funds will be gone, three months. I don't think the backup at Tenova, or Laker, or the war will be gone. It may be reduced until a virgin zebra x-ray zombie comes out. Where are we on now, Bill?
I just have any. Mr. Chairman, I asked him, well, sir. Chris, if negotiations, everybody's in the room, everybody's got a opinion, here's my, what I want to know. And I've studied the law, no chance. If the fourth ambulance is, is negotiated, it's negotiated, price is negotiated, you come to a price and you approve it. How long's that fourth ambulance? How, like, what kind of relief's that gonna give us? Because I looked at four different ambulance services, similar to the same size Pope County's got. And it, it added ninety to a hundred and twenty minutes to a daily four-to-six unit call. I mean, is that gonna, is one gonna be enough? Is what I'm asking. You know, if we got three at the hospital and a broke leg company with number four, everybody's there. I mean, that's.
We had four before for all these years.
Yeah.
But I say what you were saying, I mean, but they might be a time with ten, ain't another four.
That's what I'm saying.
That's true. Make, no, you can make no mistake, right now we're gonna bring in Q R V, and I'm not talking about doing away with Q R V. I'm talking about adding a fourth ambulance.
That's what I'm talking about.
Because that Q R V, those, those broke legs and all, that Q R V pushing fluids, it, uh, it. The situation comes up where just pushing fluids might be an option to keep somebody from going to that emergency room. You know, if it may be possible, the Q R V can handle that call. Well, your ambulance is sitting down at Tenova waiting all day. Hey, don't get me wrong, they've done a fantastic job. I laid down there in the ER for three days waiting on a room. They were covered up. That ambulance service right there, from the time I got the ambulance, got down there and actually, they took me. No less than nine calls either coming back and forth with our ambulance service, even though this ambulance was tied up with me. And I, I know at least another Pope County ambulance down there when we got there. So I know at least two were tied up at the hospital, and there was one call holding because we didn't have an ambulance.
Well, the third truck was, luckily, we've not been to a point yet, and I'm aware of the worries. We did not have an ambulance to cover a call. But we've been close.
Okay.
Both the times, we've been very close.
I think it wasn't a broke leg, it was a heart attack.
We've, we've been.
How far did we go?
We've been a little zero multiple times.
Yes, we were right now. Ninety-eight, so they went home.
Yeah, and we're just hoping the brand doesn't, because nobody else, everybody else is shorthanded, everybody else is running, everybody else is hung up at the hospitals like what we have been. And, yeah, there's no backup. You know, they, as a matter of fact, we, there's been a few times where it's failed just right, and we've been on standby for a couple of times here in the last just couple of weeks.
And, and make no doubt, and I am being selfish on this because I've seen the first hand here lately. But I can tell you, when that call comes in I was talking about, and they were down there with me, it's when I picked the phone up and called, uh, Ms. Rogers there and told her to put this on me. Because I figured I had another one. And I felt like that warmed over.
So who does ambulance committee make? The ambulance committee, they made a monster sale.
Ambulance committee makes, with county existing and the county attorney, uh, represented from them. To see what legally we need to, can do as far as adding a fourth ambulance under them.
What's our bid say by this time, say? You've got pretty good management.
Real tight.
It's one M D, just one word to make a difference. Do you mean the word, the word?
It's a hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, it said something about the option, they had a fourth.
There, there was, and when we left, there, there was something in the motion. We, but I think that time has passed just to go back and ask without, without them submitting, submitting any pricing.
Well, we'd have personnel too.
Chris, that would be part of that three months, if we, if we start right now, we're looking at three months before it comes.
That's what he said, even with, like, they need great spirit to get it up and running.
Yeah, because that's what I said, everybody's so short-staffed. Would you be, be able to find personnel for a fourth ambulance?
Chairman, I, I think what I'm asking for is, is permission to contact the ambulance committee and proceed with the idea of, of.
I don't know, wait. I don't get committed to that tweak issue.
Was there anything else from members or?
Y'all were.
Is there anything else from members, Chris, in, in, having like that?
You go.
No, fine, we'd be, I, I was glad it didn't take that long, I, we, we just, these guys are amazing. Uh, and they've just kind of received some pretty devastating news about more of a COVID. So I was gonna ask, humbly ask, if we postpone this conversation, since it didn't take very long, I'm gonna just kind of let them jet out and decompress them all themselves.
Did he?
They, they've made some, some changes in his treatment pack that are, that are not gonna benefit us as a family very well. Um, and so I, I'm gonna let them jet on that.
Oh, it's fine, y'all do what you need to, and we appreciate the job you do too.
We'd be glad to come discuss anything. We'll run some numbers, it may be that, that we can add it at a very reasonable expense to the county, well, you know, we're, we're gonna pass through this chief of product, uh, chief of property, y'all, if it can. Uh, there's no doubt that everybody's busy. I can't sit here and tell you today that in ninety days I can have people hired to, to staff them because everybody's, Jamie's back there, and, and he's, he's just as short as everybody else and running just as many calls.
Twenty percent.
Bradley County's the same way, everybody's in a tight.
Twenty percent short on staff right now.
Yeah. So, uh, it, it's tied across the world. Y'all are in much better shape than my home state, I can promise you. There are also some changes coming from the health department statewide that may help alleviate some of our problems. Um, with some, some National Guard deployments to help offload some patient care. Uh, so it, it may actually get a little bit better and, then the next wave of this stuff will show up. We just don't know that. Uh, but we're, we're kind of all working as a team to do whatever we can to, to lighten the load. And there, there are things we can do that would be very unsettling in the ER, according to federal laws, when they pull on their property, the patient belongs to the hospital, so I can put them on the floor and leave. But then how does that make us look? Although I'm looking forward, we might go back out. Real bad, real bad. So there are some cases where if the patient is extremely stable, we're transporting to the waiting room right now, and, and we're not taking them back to the emergency room aside. Uh, there are some things we're doing to help relieve some of the stress and the tension on these guys right here. Uh, but I, I can't tell you what tomorrow holds. Uh, it, it, the, the whole healthcare arena across the country is in a tough spot. But we, we greatly appreciate y'all. We, we love working with y'all, we'll be glad to sit down and discuss anything that y'all want, any kind of options that we can realistically put on the table. Y'all, I'm saying, I feel good, we can make that. We need to make sure legal applies and we're in good standing and we, and we will be doing. We will be contacting you at all this issue. We welcome the conversation.
I, I will say, I don't know, you know, what goes on East End, something down here, but I get a lot of compliments down here now. Positive comments, you know, about the ambulance service.
Oh, it's done a one-eighty.
The job that they're doing.
It, it's done a one-eighty. I quit taking complaints as complaints. Didn't have much to go, three? And it started getting, you know, good.
Oh, you need anything?
No, that's it, but I just want to thank that room full of people right here, four people in this room in the next ninety days to go out and cover it. I mean, isn't that, you know, that's scary. That is so scary.
And somebody does, hopefully, a thing, somebody nearly puts some traffic. Well, I take zero credit, if, if it wasn't for these guys right here. Uh, if it wouldn't be for it's at today. I'm a, a support mechanism always. Uh, I come up every once in a while, check on them, buy them lunch, tell them how good they're doing. Uh, put a phone book in the front seat so some people can drive. And, uh, and then, uh, go on to my next meeting, so. It is, the improvement up here is a one-hundred percent, that's all, all we do. So, uh, we, like I said, we appreciate it, we welcome any discussion at all. I'm glad y'all, y'all, ambulance service made sure the committee did this last year. And, uh, I've not had anything y'all not agree as to, to the best of your ability in time, and I do appreciate that. Absolutely. We thank y'all very much.
And be sure to let his family know. Good evening, thank you, Donald. Very good, Mike.
Well, I'll just go ahead and pass it on to you, I talked to this one a few minutes ago. Sometime tomorrow, we will be going to get him to take him to Ospreys facility. From there, I mean, it's, it's not gonna get him there, that is what they finally realized now.
How many years is he?
He had thirty-something years in EMS, uh, third, around thirty-three, thirty-four years.
How many years in Pope County?
Uh, eleven. Well, starting now, this last bit, he started out here. I mean, he, he was from here, he started out in the Sheriff's Department, uh, for EMS here back in the eighties. And then, and moved around a little bit, he's been back here eleven, twelve years now.
I was, I was thinking that I heard somebody say he had run out twenty years of service in, to this county.
I've heard that before, yes.
Yes, that's a problem.
I thank y'all for. So, Chairman, you will authorize the committee, you have to say forward, come back to the commission.
Next is broadband funding, and we spoke about this earlier, it's, uh, sort of complex, uh, well, sort of. All the money is, uh, federal COVID money. We've got two very important things I feel like need to be done with. Uh, I believe I agree, one of them is broadband expansion, and two is employee bonuses. So what I'd like to do is, uh, I guess to add, I don't know what committee, and of course, anybody else on the 10. And let's start looking at, uh, you know, running the numbers. We've got two years to pay for the grant for the broadband expansion, which I know sooner the better, get it paid off and get it behind us. But there's money we've got now, and more money coming in February, so I think we can make, let's look at what we can put towards broadband. And how much for employee bonuses, you know, when they get with a part of the head, get time sheets, uh, get the ball rolling, get that started. We'll probably, we'll probably make this month or in October. The only, uh, kickback is, we got a meeting in, in November, I mean.
Yeah, the, that, that's what I said, I correct, uh, November is about bonuses, the way that we understand.
That's the train is built, right, in November?
Yes.
Yeah, it's added rest is the bonus, I said, in November, but what I.
That's training, the training, that's not a league, that's, that's the training.
Once a day, everybody in one room talking about money, I mean, how much you want to.
Probably actually Wednesday, it's every Wednesday from now until the end of November, and it's a different subject every Wednesday.
And if we can make, make time, and start getting time sheets and everything gathered up, this way we'll do get the money, and we got the training going on. Yeah, just training behind us, then I will have to cut checks when I get the money. We'll have all the, uh, in-between out of the way when the money does get here, and the lamp, and, uh, what it's needed. Time, I guess, time sheets, basically, and.
The request has already come in from the, uh, law hearing, right?
Yep, we got two years to pay, which I'll likely take at home, but I would like to see, for sure, we get the money in February, for sure, for sure. And we'll look at bonuses and broadband expansion both at this, uh, meeting, meeting.
Robbie, you have the request, and how much is the request?
Some of the.
About a million dollars.
Yeah, the V E C, Law Hearing Edge Cooperative, is asking the county for a 10% match. They're wanting to put in two-hundred-and-twenty-nine miles of fiber. It's an estimated one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight meters. The 10%, the estimated total cost for this is ten million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-eleven dollars and forty cents. 10% of the county match over two years is one million, twelve thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Over how many years?
It says that a 10% match over two years.
That's going out, but they want the, it's, they want the, uh, the county to commit to, by resolution, is that amount? Is that not correct?
That's the way that I understand.
And I, we need, we'll put that on October's end, resolution.
But we have that money, right?
Right now?
We do, but I wanna say how much, we got new bonuses.
We do, and, and the numbers have been run on bonuses. There's been a lot worse done on bonuses.
There has, oh, nobody agrees on the map yet. So.
So you've got two issues, you've got broadband that has to be done, or not, which is a primary, of, or, and you have bonuses, which is a secondary, underarm.
I thought the bonus was a primary.
No, sir, it's not, this is the end of the category.
All right, well, anyway, we're gonna wait a minute, you, and we'll have this on there, October, make the resolution for the broadband, and we'll know then how much we can.
So, Chairman?
Yeah, I think you need to appoint an ARP committee.
I was gonna use it.
That'll go through this. Um, I went through a training yesterday, overview training, and that's a whole lot. So I think we need to.
You've been all on it, ain't you?
Yeah.
I've been to five, I've been to five different ARP trainings, including one that Chris has, I didn't know about, and I called it the next day.
has, I didn't know about, and I called her the next day. But there's a whole lot more, and there's some that is standardized like broadband, and water, sewer, am I right on that, Rob?
If we don't use it right, we have to put it back out of our, our.
If it's done wrong, you're going to hurt.
Yeah.
And, you know, Samantha and I, we attended an in-person training at Cleveland State, and this is how fast this changes. One of the questions that I had had, because it's one-time expense to update buildings now, and they have changed that since that meeting, because I was sitting with a Southeast Tennessee Development District Committee man, and also with State Rep Dan Howe, because that was one of my questions. And I'll just be honest, look at the condition of our courthouse, that's one of the things that I would really like to see improved. Gina's been in here as long or longer than any of the rest of us, but there's things that need to be done, and that was one of those gray areas. But whenever they said at the meeting that Samantha and I was at, air handling equipment, spacing of employees, and things like that, State Rep Dan Howe smacks me on the left side, Chuck Hammond on the right side, he said, there's the answer to your question. It had changed that fast since the last time that they had presented this, so there's a whole lot of changes that's with it. But Commissioner Pippin, you're to ask, right now, currently, we have one point six, one million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. And if the papers need that information, we want them to give it to you. We are going to be receiving three million, two hundred, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. That is in three installments that are to come. This money had just hit, Catrice and I, what, two weeks ago, whenever I was actually, I wasn't in quarantine, but I had to be isolated, but still had to come in and do some things, but it took five hours, four hours to get the portal set up, so it's been very frustrating. I don't want anybody to think that this has not been worked out, not been looked at, not been done. We were here till six, six-thirty that night trying to get everything, but it is extremely, everybody wants the golden egg, and for once, it looks like we're starting to polish it, but there's no set way how to do all these things, and it's evolving and it's changing. And if any of that money's misappropriated or misused, the taxpayers of this county.
Pay it back.
Pay it back.
One of my questions is the VEC, it is one of the primary categories there.
Yes.
And it is a valid, but what is our timeframe of taking the chance on missing the opportunity on the ten percent match on that?
The way, and so let me, so the VEC came into the office because as Commissioner Pippin said, that's one of the three, sewer, water, broadband, so they came to the office.
That's solid.
Correct, that's solid.
And that's what Mumpower is really pushing too.
Correct, and so, and there's some more money that's on the water and sewer side. But anyway, VEC came when we sit down, they have an area that has already been having money spent, because it does come off from Twin Lakes, which is in Bradley County. So the service area that is available in Polk County has already been studied, the money's already been spinning out through previous studies to bring it into that, those areas that they have listed. This is a ten million dollar project, but they're asking for a ten percent to meet this. Now what will that do? Once this area gets coverage, you're going to see an expansion that falls out. It's going to keep coming in, keep growing. I know Commissioner Pippin said, well, about Comcast, what about Charter? I've not met with any of them.
But we do have a charter grant for the Turpin, that kind of area that was awarded.
Correct.
A couple of months ago, right prior to.
Prior to all this.
Totally different section of money.
Correct.
That will be providing a good.
Mark said that would be good within like three years.
Yeah, three years implementation.
Will that take out the cost of these or?
No, it's a different area.
Different areas. And then another thing with what Samantha said in that meeting was that, Mumpower, they're really pushing sewer, water, broadband. There's almost four million, over four million, I can't remember the exact number, Catrice, in memory?
Four point four.
Four point four million that's coming out for water and sewer on top of this.
That's from the state or to the county?
Correct, so that's going to be able to help, and I know Commissioner Pippin is going to be able to help the city event, it's also going to be able to help Recreation Utility District, Oakway Utility District, Edwell Utilities. And whenever I've been out and, you know, going after CDGB grants and everything else, you get amazed at the number of people that will tell me, I go storing a bottle of water, I want internet. And it's amazing the way that internet is the big push, and I've had five people in the office this week because they've heard about this VEC money or possibilities out there, and they just want to be sure that the county can. And I told them, I said, everybody I know of is starving to death for this broadband, so it's something that's very well needed.
That water number is four point two.
Four two.
Now, I'm going to make this last statement, Bruce, I promise I'm going to get up and go on.
You good?
I promise.
Go ahead.
Broadband now is what interstate travel was for Polk County. We never had, you know, we didn't have interstate, we didn't have interstate. Broadband now is kind of keeping that place for our kids, and if this COVID keeps going on, or whatever replaces it next time, the schools need that resource. Our kids need that resource. If you done business, I mean, I might have interstate, but if you had, well, with broadband throughout the county, you would have a networkable site of work.
Well, and there's so many adults now that needs it.
And they do.
That they don't get home.
So what I'm worried about, this is my work, and I hope this, this Brooks, I know that they made this point, we bought a house behind the school several years ago, and we said, we're going to take this house and we're going to sell the house, we're going to buy the land, we'll sell the house and put the money back in to the pocket that we've expended the money on. And this day, we still own that blank house.
And while you have it out there, we're going to make a decision.
And we have, and we've talked about.
And schools and architects and what's that?
And we've asked for, we've asked for the information, but we still own it. And I'm afraid we'll sit here and let it slip by if we're not real careful, on the things that have been designated as your one.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. We're talking about brick and mortar and cable, and I can appreciate, I mean, y'all have been to meetings, on the meetings, and by the time you understand that that changed, that's the government didn't help. What about the people that we're out there working against every day, twelve hours a day?
I've already addressed that.
You have addressed it, but you said that the super, the bosses or the sheriff or whomever, they need to address it by turning in timesheets, is that correct?
It only goes about how many hours they actually work.
It's actually work, it's based on our work.
Yeah.
From March twenty twenty to March twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay. And the super, the heads of the departments, they've been asked to turn all that in for the people, correct?
Not yet, I don't think.
That's why this committee's going to be holding.
Right.
That's, we're moving to that.
That's my thinking there, is because we still got November to train. Before, I'm out, sure, when it's all over, we'll be able to do balances. Well, in the meantime, let's get everybody's timesheets, have everything ready to go, and then when we do get approval, you know, we'll be no more holdup, we just.
In other words, be there with hours and who done it, who worked.
Yeah, that's what the committee's going to do, get everything, and then we'll make it, Rob, and Catrice, and just keep them up to speed, and that way, when we do figure out the map and decide, you know, what we can't spend, everything be in place, then we don't want to hold up.
We've got to make sure we don't spend all our money over here to have nothing for this, because it is a re-whatever American recovery program.
You're not, you don't get.
For this or for that. We've got to make sure it's balanced.
Well, they have until what, December, if you change it?
Uh, they say the finals was going to be out this month. The guy, the final guidelines were supposed to be released.
It was either October, December.
Why is that making in November to train?
That's training for what they released instead of. Here's the rules now when training has to be.
Well, I'll get on the committee's point soon, like this weekend, and that committee will wait soon, like probably next week.
Well, don't worry, wifi, the internet, all of that, that's very important. Our kids, our kids need that more than anything.
We're going to be up to.
You know, I would just, you know.
Both of them are pretty high priority.
I just think most that ain't important this damn time. Everybody, it's, you know, we just, that's what I tell everybody, if people start calling, we can't look at just one end. We have to look at everything as a whole. Because, you know, and then you get cussed by this, and then cussed by that, and then praised by this, and then, woo, you get it all, you know, but believe me, we know how underpaid everybody is. Oh, how we know, and it is just, and we don't like it. But we've also, we have to look at everything, because we can't take it off of Grandma and Grandpa that's bringing, that's making six hundred dollars a month, we can't keep adding their bill up here either. So that's where we're at on that. But this recovery thing, let's just pray that everything, at least, hopefully, will be able to give some decent bonuses that our, nobody is saying, and forever, you know, and, I mean, that, that's so deserved.
Next is a new computer for the clerk's office.
Those, our auditor has told us that we need to be updated because we're smaller than on Windows seven. And Windows eleven is coming out, so there you go. That's all behind our computers are, and how small our computers are. But these would just be coming out of our earmark funds.
So what do you think to avoid in there?
I would have to do one, yes.
Ms. Rogers, did you check on that further on it, or are you asking for it out of your designated fund?
I mean, if you want to say where I'll let you go.
Well.
This side.
What's your total cost on that?
Um, so for all of them, including the downtown office, it's eight thousand five hundred and six, that's for six computers.
Eight thousand five hundred and six.
And I don't have, I didn't.
You didn't include a budget amendment?
I did.
You just want to put on a general bus over meeting?
Yeah.
Really, help if you have, because your reserve number is thirty-four, five, one, five.
Plus a reserve?
Thirty-four, five, one, five.
Thirty-four, five, one, five?
Yes, sir.
Jackie, do you have a problem with it coming out of that reserve?
I mean, that's appropriate, it is an appropriate line.
Do I, I'm sorry.
Would you have a problem coming out of thirty-five, five, one, five? Okay, what would be the expenditure, Catrice? Where's Catrice?
She's looking, she said to give her a minute, she can't do magic, what's she saying? For you to sit back there and be calm.
What'd you say, Catrice?
I wasn't expecting more from her, that's why I just. I didn't think it was. What's your department number, Dr. Tom? So it would be five-two, five-zero-zero, maybe four-nine-nine, others.
What's the first, what's catch?
That's what we've been.
Then we got one thing, believe me, suspend the rules on. I can make a motion, I might kiss the AD board.
If you take five-seven-oh-nine.
What was it?
If you take five-hundred-seven-oh-nine.
Let us get next one.
Next one.
I'll have one to do it on the wire. I'll have one, Ray.
I should have had one, Jack, I should have passed you back on that.
That's okay.
I'm not lost in the suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion by Jeremy, second by Samantha, it's about the AD board of board.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
David Davis?
Yes.
James Deal?
Yes.
U.S. Knox?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Samantha Tran? Yes. James Woody?
Yes.
You got this, Rob?
Okay, y'all waiting on my answer, and I do apologize for not getting that put back into your office agenda, that was, I was in a meeting that first day, whenever I was back and then trying to hurry and get everything in, I do apologize. You all only had one new person, one new member, or one person that applied to be a member of the AD board. Sherry Kepstall did not reapply, so her two-year term is up. Your two-year term board members that did reapply are Mark Allen and Tim Jones. This is a staggered board that serves six-year term, so this was their first two, and so a year out, they would serve a six-year term, and in two years, you'll get your four years that put in turn of six years. Buddy Haynes is from District Three, and this would give that representation to District Three on the AD board, and so he's the only new member, but Tim Jones and Mark Allen are the two that's been on there and that seek to stay on.
You're going to approve all three, given they're doing one at a time?
If that's, if that's what y'all want to do, I submitted all three of them as an approval, so.
I'm making a motion to the first, and take this report on IDB.
I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Samantha, any more discussion on that, IDB board?
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
David Davis?
Yes.
James Deal?
Yes.
U.S. Knox?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Samantha Tran? Yes. James Woody?
Yes. Maps and stations, anybody got anything like the maps and station?
I'd like the maps, so. Thank you, I do appreciate the job that I'm supposed to do, and hopefully another. But thank you, Ed, for the end, maybe you had expectations.
I second that, that's for sure, and I would like to add too, that we do appreciate our walk-in clinics that we have here in Polk County, especially the Elijah's Green compassionate doctor lady, she is absolutely outstanding, but we do appreciate each and everyone, our doctors and nurses, our ambulance, guns of all, just had it unbelievable, and so I would like to add that, it's, we just really appreciate.
And deputies?
And deputies, exactly.
Y'all have it?
Everybody.
Frontliners?
Nine-one mortars, everybody. We just appreciate everything that you do.
We also have a redistricting meeting next Thursday at seven, here.
Did you hear or collect? He did the election.
Would you like for me to be there?
Samantha, I've got wifi on the screen for her to hook up to, y'all can use my office.
Okay, I mean, you want me to tell her?
I'll be fine.
Okay, yeah, so she, that's what she wanted to do, that was the only day she had open, so.
Election commission?
Yeah.
If anybody's needing a little job every Friday, my, the driver that hauls our meals to the east side of the county, he's had to quit because of health reasons, so anybody that's interested in that, it's one Friday, or every Friday, is to take the meals to the courthouse, to the Ducktown Community Center, prepaid the travel from the courthouse to the community center, back to the courthouse. So anybody that's just jumping up and down, wants to, out back and forth every Friday, come see me. If not, they will, and whoever draws the low straw in the office will be doing that for a little while until we get it filled, but we will continue to do that, and that's something that's very important. And if you know anybody in the county that needs to get on the Meals on Wheels program, you can swing by the office, literature as far as building it out, there are requirements that have to be met, and Jamie Posey is our new Meals on Wheels director, she's been in this couple of months, done a great job, we've got a couple more residents that signed up for this program within our county.
I've got one specific question, I was going to put one out there, I haven't done it all night, but any chance of, probably have you had any contact about the hospital up now, since its four walls is riddled with electricity and every hospital around is maxed out, has no rooms, no. It's four walls, it's roof, it's all electricity, and every hospital around, because Max Dow has no rooms, no beds to.
I know, it's what I said, I can't believe.
And is there any chance that the state might be interested in doing a short-term site lease, or, or have you talked to anybody about anything like that?
It's been a little while since I've talked to anybody from, uh, I'm trying to remember, John, I know it was, uh, Dewey, Woody with whatever department, he's home in security, if I'm not mistaken. I know whenever the COVID outbreak first started, they did came, they did come, we went through the hospital and the possibility of looking to making that kind of like a, an area, you know, for patients.
Start, start treatment, transfer out.
But as of the last couple, fourteen, sixteen, fourteen months, no, I, I've not spoken to them.
Would you take maybe a couple minutes this next weekend, and just kind of.
Oh, yes, I mean, I.
Remind them when we have a hospital, if they got any, I mean, send to that hospital, clean it up and use it, you know, we wouldn't mind.
Yes, and I have, you know, reached out, I know that, uh, Tadova has asked for the, um, I V stands, and we've been working out as far as a, a pricing for them on those, go back after that's resolution, I know different ones talked as far as I had the rev, resolution to sell some items to me, an I V stand is not a very big item, and so, you know, but.
But it's much needed right now.
Correct, it's much needed right now, but as far as, you know, Tadova or Erlinger, or anybody reaching out, no, but I have reached out to them, but all they've been wanting is some, some of the smaller things that we have, not the actual four walls, as you said.
Anything else? You got a motion, Mr.?